Okay, we're live and recording and if anyone needs me, either give my cellphone a call or just shout out, I'm gonna mute myself and take my video.
Hey, thanks Joe. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Muhlenberg Township Planning Commission to order if we could rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The republic on which it stands. One nation under God. With liberty and justice for all. Okay, just a reminder for all of the participates, this is a Zoom meeting, so it is being recorded for record. And we are also being livestreamed on YouTube, so any members of the public can watch the proceedings of our meeting. So just that information for you. Since this is our first meeting of 2021, the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code, which is Pennsylvania Act 247, does require that each year the Planning Commission nominate and elect a vice chairperson, a chairperson, and a secretary. So with this being our first meeting of 2021, what I'd like to do is turn the meeting over to Brian Harris, the township manager, and ask him to proceed with that process. Brian?
Thank you Walt. At this point, I would like to accept a motion, a nomination for the chairperson for the Muhlenberg Township Planning Commission.
Walt LaSota. I nominate Walt LaSota.
We have a motion by Dave Hepner for Walt LaSota. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Frank Sabatucci. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Congratulations Walt. At this point, I would like to receive nominations for Vice Chairman.
I nominate Bob Entler.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Walt LaSota, a second by Dave Hepner for Bob Entler as the Vice Chairman. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations Bob. At this point, I would like a nomination for Chair, I'm sorry, Secretary.
I nominate Frank Sabatucci.
We have a motion by Dave Hepner for Frank Sabatucci. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob Entler. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Frank, congratulations on being the Secretary.
Thank you sir.
So our slate of officers for 2021 is Walt LaSota as the Chairman, Bob Entler as the Vice Chairman, Frank Sabatucci as the Secretary, and at this point, I will turn it back over to the Chairman.
Alright, thank you Brian. Also want to, first of all, acknowledge the participation this evening of Commissioner Lurch and Commissioner Wolfinger. And later in our agenda, we'll give them an opportunity if they want to offer any comments to the Planning Commission members. And I do want to thank each of the Planning Commission members. I know, I think I say this every year, but you do make my job very easy in three ways. One, at each of our meetings, you each bring a passion for making Muhlenberg Township a better place, not only for our residents, but employers in the township, employees and visitors. So I appreciate the passion that you bring to each of our meetings. Second of all, I enjoy the conversations that we have and that each of the members take the time to listen to each other's comments and understand their comments, so that when we make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, we're typically very supportive and understanding of the recommendation that's being forwarded. So thank you for all that hard work last year and looking forward to working with you here in 2021. Next item on the agenda is the Secretary's report. I don't believe, Brian, there was anything received. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's no current engineering reviews or no proposed subdivisions on the, on the agenda tonight. Therefore, there are no documents that need to be read into the record by the Secretary.
Okay, thank you. Next would be acceptance of the minutes of our December 16th, 2020 meeting. Do any of the members have any corrections or any additions? And the only question, Brian, that I have, do you feel since that was a virtual meeting, is it necessary for us somewhere in the minutes? And I'm thinking under special note by the Chairman to include a note that you told us that there were no questions or comments received by the public by 4:00 PM on December 16th, or isn't that necessary?
You know, I think I can go on record tonight. That would be satisfactory. We could enter that into this month's meeting minutes to reflect that we did not receive any public comment or questions for the December 16th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments from any of the members? If not, can I have, go ahead. If not, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, the vote's unanimous. Alright, on to unfinished business. Brian, let me ask you, first of all, for this meeting, did we receive any questions or comments from the public as of 4:00 PM today for the Planning Commission?
We did not.
Okay. Alright then, under unfinished business, all we wanted to do this evening is have some more discussion on where we are with the the comprehensive plan. And I'd like to start the discussion, first of all, by talking a little bit more about the questions that each of the members developed over the last several months. And I want to do that only to get clarity around what we are attempting to achieve by developing those questions. And what we're trying to achieve from these questions is basically an evaluation of our 2003 comprehensive plan. So these questions really have nothing to do with revised or the new comprehensive plan. It's really an opportunity for us to take a look at the 2003 comprehensive plan and see how well we as a planning commission, how well the staff, administration, Board of Commissioners, how did we do? Give us a report card on how did we do in executing the goals that were identified in the 2003 comprehensive plan. So the way I related this to someone is, you know, if you're taking a course in high school or in college, you have a textbook typically for that course. Well, the comprehensive plan is our textbook. And if you're in school, the way the teacher or the instructor or the professor identifies how well you did with that course, with the material in that textbook, is they give you a test, and the test is usually a series of questions. So that's what these questions that I asked each of the members to develop, that is the goal, is these questions will be submitted to the various individuals and organizations that we identified. And once we get the answers to responses back to each of those questions, we as a planning commission will evaluate how successful we were in implementing the goals of the 2003 comprehensive plan. Is there any question about that or an understanding what we're trying to achieve there? So again, it really doesn't relate to the new comprehensive plan or the revised comprehensive plan. It's really an evaluation of the existing comprehensive plan. Okay, not hearing anything. In your package that was sent out on pages five through 13, Brian included all of the questions that each of the members developed as an evaluation of the goals in the 2003 comprehensive plan. And in there is also the names of individuals or organizations that we feel would be appropriate to answer those questions. I believe I had asked by, I think it was January the 15th, that any of the members had any additional questions, revisions to the questions or changes to the individuals or organizations that would be answering the questions to get those to Brian by the 15th of January. I don't believe we received any, Brian, if I'm correct. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that said, I did review the questions. I'm satisfied with them. What I'd like to do with this evening's meeting, we don't need a motion for this, but I'd like to give Brian permission to take those questions and submit them to the organizations of the individuals that were identified. And give them maybe 30 days, give them a month to respond back. And then at that point, we as a planning commission will review the responses and identify how well we did in executing the 2003 comprehensive plan. Does that make sense with everyone? Is everybody in agreement with moving forward with those questions?
Do you need a motion for that, or?
No, I think we just let Brian move ahead with that.
That's fine by me.
Okay, Brian, you okay doing that then? If you need any help, just let me know.
Or were you hoping to address this at the February Planning Commission meeting, or do we just want to give them 30 days and drag it into the March meeting?
Yeah, I think with COVID and trying to get responses like in the Berks County Planning Commission, I'd wait till the March meeting to hopefully have the responses by then.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd like to turn the meeting over first to Commissioner Lurch. At Monday evenings, Board of Commissioners meetings, he made some recommendations, some suggestions about moving forward with the comprehensive plan like him to offer those comments to us this evening. Commissioner Lurch?
It'd help if I take myself off mute, right? So first, I want to thank all the commission members again for your service and all that you do for Muhlenberg. It's a very important part of our makeup. And I want to thank you all for your professionalism. You know, I don't interact with a lot of other boards, but I do get to talk with other municipal leaders. And from what I hear, you know, our planning commission is one of the finest in the, in the entire county. So I thank you very much for the, for the service that you provide, the Board of Commissioners and the residents as a whole. So with that, the, the comprehensive plan is an extremely important document. And you know, it kind of lays out a groundwork so that we can all be on the same page and have like-mindedness when we're looking at, at growth and, you know, the, the future of the municipality for our current residents and our future residents. And right now, I think we're kind of at a crossroads, but we're at a really unique intersection where there are a lot of agencies that are trying to do the same thing. And I'm a part of some of that, but not all of it. So in, in talking with Walt and in attending your meetings and looking at the comprehensive plan, I think it's a great thing that we're doing this in-house. We have a wide variety of expertise on our current commission. So you all bring something unique to the table, and I think it's great that you all have ideas and you're all willing to to speak up and represent different entities within the, within the township and organizations from outside the township. I think it's unique that we're using, or we're partnering with the, the Berks County Planning Commission because working with them, you know, we, we, we get to hear some of that bigger picture of what's happening across the county and how we can play into that. You know, I, I've long been a proponent of working together with other municipalities when we're talking about strategic planning, so that it's just not very haphazard and we can all benefit from that. Now, hand in hand with that, I represent Muhlenberg on the Berks Municipal Partnership, which is part of the Center for Excellence in Local Government at Albright College. So there is, there's always a lot of cooperation taking place there. But in the last two years, there's been a lot of discussion about planning and growth. And two years ago, there was a presentation about rebuilding existing infrastructure and repurposing urban areas that have already been developed, and there was a big talk about redevelopment. The, the catchphrase of that night was walkability. Because the, the younger generation, you know, they're, they're not out buying single homes, they're not out buying cars. They, they've been looking at areas that they can live, walk to work, walk to a grocery store, walk to their entertainment. It has a different flavor, as I was telling Walt a little earlier, we're not talking the 1940s or 1950s here, but but it presents some, some unique challenges. Now, that was two years ago. Now recently, I was at a meeting and there was a lot of discussion about a lack of housing for potential workers if we were to expand as a county, if we were to expand our business areas, industrial and otherwise. So there was some discussion at, at these meetings about municipalities going in and kind of pulling back and being a little, a little less stringent on some of their their codes and zoning on, for new development. So I kind of raised my hand and I said, well, you know, one, one year we're talking, we're kind of focusing on redevelopment and now there's a push for new development. And, and I'm not saying that they're mutually exclusive, but it occurred to me that there are probably municipalities in the county who don't necessarily want to see a lot of development. And I think Muhlenberg is in a position where we can do a lot of redevelopment. But I think it would be important to take a look at some of our zoning as we have now and question whether our infrastructure could handle a lot of brand new development. So in thinking about this and in your charge in developing a new comprehensive plan, it occurred to me that it would be beneficial to have maybe a a workshop, and I'm thinking just a couple of hours, maybe on a Saturday morning, where we bring some of the partners together who have a vested interest in growth and the outcome of growth and development within the township. And what I was envisioning was a workshop where all of you would be invited. We would invite our zoning hearing board, members of the school district, and as a matter of good faith, members of the Laureldale community, because I know that they're in tandem with, with you are looking at their comprehensive plan and working with the, the county. Not saying that we're going to come out with some kind of a concrete idea, but I want to see some ideas of some, something that we can work from and get some input from some of the, the other folks that have an interest. Because it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me for the township to sit down and say, yeah, we want to see this kind of growth, whether it be, you know, industrial or, or businesses, or we want to bring new housing in, without talking to the school district to find out what the ramifications and impacts would be. You know, can they handle X number of new students before they have to go out and contemplate building new facilities? Because that's impactful to the members of the township, of the residents of the township. Likewise, MTA, you know, is, is our water authority. You know, they, they have plenty of capacity, but at what point do they reach capacity? So could they support some new industry? Could they support a hotel? If, if we really wanted to pursue that. And some of the other components are even, even on the, the Board of Commissioners, you know, you have somebody like a Mike Malinowski, who's, who's been a board member off and on for many, many years. And he has a lot of contacts throughout the county and, you know, Mike probably has an idea of what he'd like to see. Commissioner Wolfinger probably has some ideas, but as a board, we haven't had a, an opportunity to sit down together and talk through these things. So I brought it up to Brian the other day. Brian took my idea to Walt and I wanted to kind of present it to all of you. I think a workshop would be beneficial. You know, no idea would be too far off the wall. But I'd like to be able to put some kind of context around the discussion, so that it's not a free for all. And I think, in my mind, the, the comprehensive plan and maybe some of the, the divisions within the plan, the things that we want to focus on is probably the groundwork to have this discussion. Whether we bring somebody in to, to help facilitate the discussion to make sure we stay on track, because I know it's very easy to get off track. That's something that, that can be discussed in the future. But that's kind of my vision right now, because I think we need to take advantage of the opportunities that we have, especially while we're putting the plan together. That, that gives all of you some direction. And we get to tap into resources that we normally wouldn't be talking to, but those resources, I think it's, it's important to talk to. So that, that's a lot in, in a couple of minutes. So if you want to take a moment to digest that, you know, I'd like to hear some of your feedback. You know, what do you think about that idea? I'll just, I'll just open it up. Just go ahead and jump in.
Well, I'll, I'll start, Commissioner. I think it's a, a great idea. I think, you know, the planning commission members have said all along, number one, we want to get as much import, input from not only residents, but external organizations, because I think it's hard to predict where the future lies. You and I just spoke this afternoon about, you know, office space and office space may be something that we don't need anymore. And I know talking, just in my family, my daughters and her husbands, they don't even go to auto dealerships anymore. They buy cars online and have it delivered in front of their house. So the, or auto dealers gone away. So I, I think it's good just to get all of the parties together, and I think you hit the, the prime ones. Just let's get together and talk about primarily what, what is our vision for the township? You know, 20 years from now or more.
Thank you Walt. Anyone else?
I think it's a great idea, especially for those that go through the first planning comprehensive plan. It'll give us more ideas. It'll give us a better idea of what we're doing and what we want to see.
Thank you Vanessa. Anybody else?
I planned on being just a fly on the wall here at this meeting, and Brian invited me and I took him up on the offer. But looking at the 2003 plan, I mean, we have all new players now, the exception of Commissioner Malinowski on the board, Walter and Frank, you know, you were there in 2003, but we have a lot of new players here. And the township, it's, we, you know, when, when you have a plan, sometimes you put the plan down, you don't look at it. And I think it's, it's long overdue that we re-review what's going on, because in these 17 years, things have changed and we've, we've had a lot of the things and looking at the plan, we've done, done well in certain areas and maybe it was just dumb luck. But I, I think it's kind of exciting now to have, have new people on the board. And, and, and I think it's important to bring the school into the, into the picture, because that, this is going to affect them residentially or whatever. I mean, we've, we've done well, I think. You look at Muhlenberg and I, I had a great day yesterday. I don't know if it was the prednisone that I took, because I had doubt and I felt really great and it was a beautiful day. And I'm driving around the township, I'm looking at all our parks. And it, it, it's, Muhlenberg is a beautiful place to live, you know, but there's, there's, there are issues that I think we, we should take a look at. And I think it'd be good, Commissioner Lurch has verbalized it well. I think it's good to get down, sit down with the players and, and re-review that 2003 plan, because a lot of it, I think, is outdated.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You know, Kevin, Kevin, it's Frank Sabatucci. How are you?
I'm good.
Good. I am all in on workshops, whether they be virtual or sitting together and that kind of stuff. My hope for this new comprehensive plan is that we not only look at the big picture and what we're hearing from surrounding areas. You know, I, I continue to hear the word walkability too. And I'm, and I'm okay with that. My hope is that this attempt at the, the comprehensive plan also gets a little bit more granular and addresses the the, the, the issues that are, the, the, the issues in the township at this point. Let's, let's just put it that way. I'm all, I'm all for, the, the last plan that we did was, it was a long time ago, but it just seemed like a lot of it was based on what Montgomery County was doing and places like that. And I don't know if it focused enough on, and I agree with, with Commissioner Wolfinger, how beautiful Muhlenberg Township is and what it has to offer, but also what our challenges are to try and solve some of those. So I'm, I'm hoping that this plan addresses the big picture issues that we hear from other places, but also focuses on what our issues are.
Well said. Yeah, you know, sometimes there are issues that, you know, we, we don't really think about. And I know some of us have talked over the last couple of years about the last comp plan. And one of the reasons that we're trying to do this in-house, at least in partnership with the county, was that when you, you know, when you do hire a firm to come in and, and help you create plans like this, what I've always heard is they, they kind of give you exactly what you want based on what they know. And like you said, Frank, you know, based on other surrounding areas and, you know, what, what happens in Monco doesn't necessarily pertain to Muhlenberg Township. You know, I, Brian, I don't remember how soon we can expect to get data from the last census. You know, the, the census will give us a lot of information too, as far as the, the demographics in the township. You know, we all know demographics change, they continually change. You know, I'm, I'm interested in seeing some of that, especially when we're looking at things like median income and family size, you know, because, because that helps too. And Muhlenberg is just so diverse, you know, we, we do have areas that are wooded and, and have large lots. We have areas with very large single homes and large lots. And then we, we have much more urbanized areas. So all these things come into play. So to, excuse me, to Frank's point, you know, some of that granularity would, would be important in, in looking at a big picture.
Kevin, will we, will we be seeking input and cooperation from law enforcement, the police, whatever?
I hadn't actually thought of that, to tell you the truth, but that is not a bad question internally. You know, when, if we think about this in terms of, let's say, the number of residents that we have or the types of businesses that come in, certainly there's an impact to the size of the force that we have to have. And I'm not necessarily the person to sit down and say, if we have X number of residents, we have to have X number of officers on the street. And I'm not necessarily the person to sit down and say, if we have X number of residents, we have to have X number of officers on the street.
No, 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 no. Well, you missed my point, but only because I wasn't clear on it. I'm thinking more if we're going to look at land use and zoning and that kind of stuff. There are a lot of times where we have violations that the police are supposed to attend to. I'm just thinking, you know, some of it, some of the issues are zoning, some of them, you know, anything that happens on the street becomes more of a police issue. And I would really love to see us invite police input to make sure that I guess, I don't want to say that there's teeth in our ordinances. I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean to anybody. I'm just that what our ordinance is, is something that they're able to readily enforce. Rather than, rather than there being a catch 22 or a misunderstanding. And I apologize to the whole group, I'm probably not explaining it properly. But I really believe that it would be good if we're going to, for the first time in 17 years, look at all of this stuff to either invite the police or at least be thinking of things in terms of you know, not only the ordinance that we have, but how easy is it to enforce or make a reality? I don't even like the word enforce. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to be ugly, I'm just saying, if this is the ordinance, we should, maybe we should be talking to the zoning people and law enforcement and say, okay, here's our ordinance, but you're the one that's going to have to make it happen. Where do you, where do you see us not being able to get it done?
Okay, no, I understand your question a little bit better now. Certainly, those are discussions that we can have. I'm not, I don't know, Frank, if that really fits in with the the creation of the comp plan. I think it's maybe, and this is just my opinion here, but I think maybe it's an offshoot discussion in kind of saying, here's the ordinances that we have, here's the zoning that we have. Are we taking the steps to make sure that we're enforcing what we have on the books? I do kind of go back a little bit to the question of, you know, manpower and staffing. Do we have the manpower, to your point, to follow up on all the issues and complaints that come in? So those are certainly conversations that we can have.
Well, and then even if we, even if the final answer is, we don't have the manpower. Speaking only for myself, you know, I have people stop by my office or stop me in the street and say, hey, what are you going to do about this? And generally, what I do is I give them your cell phone number, Kevin. I said, call Kevin around midnight, he'll be happy to answer.
I usually just, if I don't, I don't even answer it, I just let it go to voicemail. No, seriously, no, 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 seriously. You know, we, we do get a lot of calls, I mean, and the commissioners take our fair share of calls to our private devices. You know, first things I usually try to do is steer the public to go through the normal proper channels so that things get documented, so that we can do the right kind of follow-up to address this particular issue, like what you're saying, you know. Did somebody call about a specific complaint or incident? And did we follow up and did we do it in a timely fashion? And I'm not saying that that always addresses the complaint. As long as we're looking into the issue, it may not be the answer that the person phoning wants to hear. But as long as we're doing our due diligence, that's the important piece. But if something is falling through the cracks because we're not staffed properly, you know, that's what the comprehensive plan has to help us do. Because if we, if we're seriously considering planning new homes in the township, you know, what does that mean from a police enforcement standpoint? And what does that do to your taxes and those types of things? So that's, I think that's part of the tie-in, but to address the immediate issue, if we feel that our police are not addressing issues that are coming in today or, you know, our zoning department is not doing its due diligence, those types of things we should be fielding now. You know, so those calls need to continue to come in to the township so we can document and follow up on that.
Well, and I guess that's where I think we should be talking to the police and the zoning and saying, okay, here's what's on the books. Is it enforceable or how enforceable is it? Or, you know, we all know that if there are whatever you want to call it, blighted properties or, you know, starting to be a lot of junkyards in this township and residential areas. If we're going to try to curb those, shouldn't we be talking to the police and the zoning people and saying, how would we make? How would we change the ordinance or what, how could we make it easier for you to address these things?
Okay. All right, good point, Frank, thank you very much. And we can certainly make that part of our conversation. Anybody else?
The only comment, Kevin, that I'll make again is, people have asked me over the years, so how difficult is the job of the planning commission and planning commission members? And I typically say, the toughest part of our job is what we're doing right now, and that's the comprehensive plan. Because that is the foundation and Frank and I have been through, I think, two of these comprehensive plans now. Once you do the comprehensive plan, I mean, the next thing is to update your zoning map and then your zoning ordinance, and then your subdivision land development. So everything builds on what you put in your comprehensive plan. And I tell members of the public that the planning commission's job is basically to review the saldo or the zoning ordinance when a developer comes in and make sure they meet those commitments that were identified in there. So the comprehensive plan is, to me, is very critical to get that right.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree too. And I said earlier tonight, I think we have a really good mix in this commission. You know, some of you have been serving for many years. But you all have different backgrounds, there's engineering backgrounds, real estate backgrounds. And some of you are fairly new members and it's always nice to hear new voices and new viewpoints. So I think we have the right people in place to make this happen. But it is, I recognize the amount of work that it is above and beyond, you know, just getting together and reviewing items for your monthly meeting. So, you know, I thank you from the bottom of my heart and on behalf of all the residents. I don't think they truly appreciate all that you do. So Walt, I'll turn it back over to you, that's all I really had to discuss. You know, we, you and Brian and I, we can get together and talk about some dates. You know, I'd like to see this happen relatively quickly, but with the number of people that we're inviting, I don't know that everybody will be able to attend. I just think it's important to have representation from these different groups. So thank you, Walt, and I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, yeah, and I'll be in touch with Brian so the three of us can get together and discuss the format.
All right.
And then get something out. Commissioner Wolfinger, was there anything else that you wanted to share with the planning commission members?
Not at all, I have been absent for a number of meetings and I apologize for that. I'll try to attend more, because I like to hear what's going on before I vote on something, just on a Monday night meeting. So I really appreciate the zoning board, planning commission. I mean, Kevin's right, we have some real professionals here that are devoted to the township and I really appreciate it. I get out and I talk to some of the business people and, you know, they appreciate. I was over at the pet store the other day and they were telling me how much they like working with our people here in the township, in the zoning in the zoning department and being friendly, being friendly to people, the business is coming in, but also protecting. And I think, Frank, you're talking about equality of life. And I have some questions there about quality of life and that's why, you know, we got a quality of life ordinance that the zoning people can use to enforce when it comes down to noise and things like that. But, you know, Muhlenberg is a great place, we wouldn't want to keep it that way. So, you know, I really appreciate all your involvement and keep it up.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the planning commission this evening? Brian, is there anything you wanted to add before we end?
I'll mention Walt, as I will, like Kevin mentioned, I'll shoot an email off to both of you, just to throw out some proposed dates. And we can start structuring our agenda accordingly. And then ultimately distribute it out to the entities that we want to attend on the set date and time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else any of the members have? If not, once again, I want to thank Joe Mensch for his technical support in pulling this meeting together. And if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Before we do, our next meeting is Wednesday, February the 17th, and we'll keep it posted if it's a virtual meeting or if we meet in person closer to that date. Can I have a meeting to, a motion to adjourn?
The move.
The second?
Second.
Okay, well adjourned, everyone have a great evening.
Thank you, good night.
Nice fish, Bob.